All right, so we'll call the select board meeting for Wednesday, April 20th, 2022 to order. We have David Phil, Jane Nevinsmith, Joyce Chunglo, John Woskevitz, and Amy Parsons here. And all votes will be taken via roll call. First order of business is the consent agenda. We have warrants AP 2241 S, AP 2240 V, AP 2240, AP 2240 S, AP 2241 S, PR 2221, PR 2220. We don't have any minutes. We have Hadley Police Department Dispatch Romeo, Appointment of Assistant Treasurer Melis Ballick Silar. One day liquor license request top of the campus, April 30th, 2022 for spring football. Disband the Committee for Agricultural Area Incentive Committee. Select Board Approval for Mass DOT Request for State Highway Access Permits for the following events. Have the Memorial Day Parade, have the Asparagus Festival, Amherst Fourth of July fireworks. Class one auto dealer license Kirby Corporation DBA Amped Up Electric Rides contingent upon receiving business certificate.
I just have a question about the Mass DOT request.
Okay.
Can we make a motion, make a motion first?
Yeah, sure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, and we'll just, we'll just pull out the Mass DOT, we'll talk about that separate.
And one other question about the parade, is it on?
It is.
Okay.
But any other discussion on that other than the Mass DOT? All right, roll call Jennifer.
Roll call Phil.
Yes.
Nevinsmith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and so Mass DOT. Jane, you have a question?
Yeah, what, what are they asking for there?
Mitch Cook is on here, he can answer that David, if you can't, I'm sorry.
No, he, he can jump in, but I believe we have to ask permission in order to use the roadway for events like the Memorial Day Parade, but Mitch can talk more.
Oh, it looks like he's requesting, they're requesting rather than we're requesting the way it's written.
Tony Cook, you there?
Yes, I am, uh, thank you. So, uh, the process in which we request permission from the state for our, for any town events that impact Route Nine require the event organizers to obtain a, uh, an access permit from Mass DOT. And in order for them to obtain the access permit, it requires for the select board, the chief of police as well as the fire chief to, uh, basically state in writing that they're aware of the project and the setup and the planning. And, uh, in past years for these events, uh, I've done these basically on an individual basis. This year I thought it best to consolidate them, um, and put all three of these events, uh, into uh, one singular request to use the select board.
Thank you.
Joyce, you had a question too?
I, I just had about the, the parade itself. We're going full force ahead with it. I haven't heard from the Legion, have you heard from the Legion?
Yeah, my understanding is it's on for the Sunday Memorial Day weekend. Um, I don't have times and, you know, for different cemeteries yet, but I think Gene Baxter is working with somebody new this year on the project, so.
She's working with Denise Barstow and I do have the time, so I can get them out to you.
Perfect, yep. Okay, any other questions on the Mass DOT topic?
No, no.
Need a motion for that.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Joyce, and Jennifer, roll call please. Yes.
Nevinsmith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
Yes.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Correct. And I'm gonna jump to, uh, Greg if he's ready before comments, because I know he's, I think he's got somewhere to be. So Greg, do you want to talk real quick about Park and Recreation update, 4.2 on the agenda?
Sure, I'm just gonna catch up on some of the, the programs that we're just wrapping up and some things are getting started and we have moving forward. We just finished youth basketball last month. We had, I guess last year there were 32 registrants, we had 86 this year. A huge jump. Uh, I think CYO not having a program helped us out a lot with, with our numbers. That was, so we had seven teams, um, between first to the fifth, sixth grade. And then we had the group of, of pre K and K. So like I said, we had about 86 kids registered through really eight teams. So really good participation, I thought that season went well. We ended up doing a postseason kind of pizza parties for everyone and all that stuff. So that stuff we want to keep has a lot of good enough experience where if CYO picks back up next year, then we can still maintain, maintain those numbers. Moving into the, the baseball season, we did some free baseball camps. Uh, we did a hitting clamp on one Saturday, then the next Saturday we did hitting, did defensive play camps. Broke those up into age groups. We had 76 registrants for the hitting camps and 70 registrants for the, the defensive play camps. So like I said, Park and Rec, we provided those free for the community and we had a pretty good turnout for those. And I think those kids in town always got a lot out of that. Uh, we also did free coaches clinics, we did two sets of free coaches clinics along with our coaches meetings for, for T-ball. Um, we've got 31 kids registered for T-ball. We're planning on breaking those kids up into three different teams. Um, we've got, uh, three different sponsors for those teams, Randy helped out getting those sponsors, so that was, that was nice. Um, so that's how they care of some of the uniform costs and those things, but, uh, it's gonna be a good season. We've, I've got a lot planned for the, for the T-ball group. Uh, we think in the past they did one day a week and we're probably gonna add extra, um, optional days. They're going a couple of days a week and I've talked to, um, Jimmy Ewan over at Sunderland, they've got some T-ball, so we might do some postseason games, um, with outside communities. I think that'd be good for the kids. Well, we also did a, a three-on-three tournament. V1 sponsored that tournament, we ended up having five youth teams. So the youth bracket made, uh, we're working on getting the adult brackets as well, but we really didn't have enough teams register for those. But we got pretty good feedback, we did have some teams register for that that do want to do that down the road. So I think next year we're gonna do the, a spring tournament, but also do a winter tournament. And I think we should be able to fill both those up with, with the feedback we got from, from what we did. Right now we're doing the, the April vacation program, so that started on Tuesday, started yesterday and that goes, you know, 8:45 drop off to, to 5:15 pickup every day. We've got 20, 26 kids, I'm sorry, 25 kids registered for that. Um, some of them are for just one or two of the days, some, some of them for the whole thing. Uh, we're averaging about 15, 16 kids per day right now. I think Friday we've got some more kids showing up because we're gonna do the pizza party and everything on Friday. But that's, that's been a pretty good experience for those guys, we're pretty much following the same format we did for that, for the February program we did. Uh, basketball and pickleball, uh, the regular season wrapped up on those, um, end of the month. But we had enough people that want to keep it going, so we're extending basketball, the adult basketball and the adult pickleball. Uh, we moved both of those into Wednesday nights, so we can go back-to-back and we've had some interest from guys talking about doing both. So I think that'll be good, and like I said, we've extended both those group, uh, programs through May. Um, yeah, uh, working a lot on the town on our website, so I think the website's looking good. We've worked on that and made that, I think it's very, uh, user-friendly for people to get in. I think we have program links, we've broken up by season and everything. So we're really working on making the, our, our online presence, um, as, as the best we can. Um, with that, we've, we've worked on our, our distribution list and everything. Uh, I think what we had from MyRec, we had about 250 emails when we got started. I did a, uh, email distribution list, kind of an ad through JotForm. And JotForm's a program we're using, we used to use MyRec, but that was like $2,000 a year. Uh, we took that out and we started using JotForm and that's about $240 a year. Um, it's a little more work on my end, but I think it's, I honestly think it's more user-friendly and it's easier for us to track our numbers through JotForm. Um, it allows us to, to customize things the way we want them. But through JotForm, we've added about 70-some emails and just through other resources. Um, we've gotten our dis, our, our distribution list up to 655 emails that we're working with. Um, we use that for like our, our newsletter, we send out the Parks Direct Bulletin, that's pretty much been bimonthly since we got started. Um, we did put out the third one, wanna say about a few weeks ago, and so it'll be a little bit before, as, as we move into the summer, before we put out the next Park and Rec Bulletin, but like I said, we've got about 155 emails, um, through that list. Um, with that too, we're working on social media quite a bit, a bunch, we've been really trying to beef that up. Um, we hit 1,000 followers, we're at 999, it kind of fluctuates, we're at 1,000 followers. Um, our post reach over the last month, uh, 9,902 reached. 2,600 actual engagement, we've had about 18 followers and likes in the last 28 days. So those give us about one snapshots, we're gonna get into that. And so we're, we're continually working on social media and online presence just to, to get the website out there and just get as much knowledge out to our community on everything we're doing and increase participation. Lots going on, we're excited about getting, getting T-ball going and helping out with baseball as much as we can and, and moving into the summer. We're planning on doing a home run derby and it's really getting more momentum moved into the fall to beef up those numbers for, for soccer and for basketball again.
Great.
The update with Parks and Rec.
Sounds good, nice update.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Thanks Greg, anybody have any questions for Greg? All right, well, thanks for stopping by.
Thanks guys, it's a learning process, if there's ever any feedback or anything I can do, let me know, because I wanna, I wanna make our programs the best we can.
Thank you. Um, all right, we'll go back to, uh, public comments, 3.1 on the agenda, we'll limit this to 15 minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes each, so that everyone has a chance to speak. If anyone's here for public comments, turn on your camera and wave at us or raise the digital hand. And Tony Fiden firsthand I saw, Tony, go ahead.
Hi. I am, um, I'm so disappointed to see the Climate Change Committee take the route of forced mandates instead of education and persuasion. We all support a healthier environment, but banning plastic bags and straws will do more harm than good. Let's start at the beginning, the committee is calling for a ban on single-use plastic bags, but that's really not the truth, is it? I looked it up and more than 90% of people use plastic bags more than once. Isn't that what we're trying to get people to do, reuse and recycle? Seems absurd that the committee is trying to ban one of the most reused items that we have. Well, it's true that we can't throw the bags in our recycle bins, the local grocery stores are happy to recycle them for you. I called and checked. Why not encourage this, educate people instead of using force? And if plastic bags are banned, what's the alternative? Well, we could pay for paper bags. So we should cut down trees to help the environment? We can buy bags made of canvas or cloth. But these bags are expensive and they use a ton of energy to produce. In fact, you have to use a tote bag 131 times before it breaks even with plastic in terms of environmental impact. And that's that the plastic bag is actually single-use. Each time the plastic bag is reused, the impact is reduced 50%. Well, tote bags are also gross. Studies show that after using it for groceries, they are usually filled with bacteria, sometimes E. coli and salmonella, can make you very sick. Remember when COVID hit, health officials actually prohibited using tote bags for groceries. Banning plastic bags comes with a cost. Not only will people pay more at the grocery stores, they also have to buy trash liners and dog bags and do all the things to replace the bags they were reusing. I don't know if the Climate Change Committee realizes this, but inflation is at an all-time high. People are struggling to pay for gas, groceries, rent and everything. Food insecurity is a serious issue. So the Climate Committee, besides it's a good time to essentially tax, put a tax on groceries. This is one of the most tone deaf things I've ever heard. It's unconscionable to force people who are struggling to make ends, ends meet, pay for your virtue signal. Plastic straws, not just a convenience for folks with disabilities and for senior citizens. You're gonna make it more difficult for the elderly and disabled to go out and to live their lives normally. Or are you gonna force them to ask for a special accommodation, which is, which is just wrong? Finally, and perhaps most importantly, you chose to use force instead of persuasion. More than two years now, we've had bureaucratic mandates jammed down our throats and most of them failed miserably. We had bureaucrats telling us how many people we could invite to our own homes and whether we could visit our sick parents and forcing us to wear dirty cloth on our faces. Now, along comes, comes the Climate Change Committee with more mandates. And we have to start saying no. We have to start saying no, or it's just not gonna stop. And this is a good chance for us to say no. But the Climate Change Committee, I would say, what makes you think you care more about the environment than our, your friends and neighbors and have? What makes you think you can't, we can't be trusted to make healthy decisions without being forced? What gives you the right to tell your friends and neighbors how to, how they, how they can carry their shoes into their homes? What kind of straw they could use? This proposal is arrogant and wrong in the facts, it will do more harm than good, including for the environment. The committee should educate and persuade, not force people to bend to its will. I hope the select board rejects this and I urge the, uh, Climate Change Committee to drop this effort. But just finally, the, all these statements I made here are verifiable, they're by research and data. And I went to the, I went to the, uh, I read the proposal, there's no facts, there's no attempt to persuade. All it says is, plastics are bad, do what we say, obey. This is, this is, this is really wrong, I'm, I'm really disappointed, I know people on that committee, they're good people, but this is really, uh, wrong-headed and I hope, uh, that the select board in the town rejects it. Thank you.
All right, thank you Tony. Okay, uh, we'll move on and we have a 6:15 appointment, uh, for the ban. So, a 4.1 on the agenda, I'm assuming Linda is gonna tell us all about that?
I don't, I don't think Linda's out of the, uh, Finance Committee meeting yet, you might come give her a minute, or a little while.
We'll move on then, in that case, let, Scott's here for, um, one thing I think, so let's move to uh, 5.3, so you can get out of here, Appointment of Interim Chief Waste Water Operator. The select board will consider the appointment of Peter Clough, uh, interim chief waste water operator effective immediately and appoint Dennis Puchinsky as the temporary wastewater treatment plant operations advisor effective May 1st, 2022. Scott or Carolyn, do you want to talk about that?
Go ahead Scott.
Good evening, uh, at, at, as retirement of Dennis came, uh, we need to appoint a chief operator. And in the interim, we appointed Peter Clough as, uh, interim chief operator. Until, uh, we can go through all the, the motions with, uh, making a permanent hire. Uh, and as you know, Dennis, uh, has been hired as a part-time shift operator for the wastewater treatment plant.
As, as a, not a regular employee, but in, um, interim employee?
Yes, interim employee, uh, up to 12 hours a week and, uh, basically we need Dennis, or the town needs another operator with a license. The, uh, third, uh, individual that is temporarily working over there from the highway department does not have a license, he is gonna be starting, uh, training, uh, next week I believe, to obtain his license. So in the meantime, we need a, another licensed operator and that's a requirement from the DEP.
Does Peter have all of his licenses Scott?
Yes, Peter, Peter's license was in training, but we applied for a waiver, uh, that he was grant, granted his license in full to our site-specific under, uh, under that, you know, John is there, that's a full operator and Dennis as needed. So he is, uh, in the eyes of the DEP, uh, fully licensed.
Okay. Don't want to get in trouble with those guys.
Yeah, I know, we, we are in full compliance of our, uh, discharge permit, so we, we are in good shape with that.
Okay, thank you.
And I know this question's gonna be asked, but why not John? And not just because he's sitting here, but, uh, just so people are, uh, understanding why not.
Okay, uh, so first of all, uh, not that John is not qualified, but in the eyes of the law in the state, John is a sewer commissioner and he cannot, uh, be chief operator and sewer commissioner, it's against the, uh, their regulations.
No, John. Scott, when I became a selectman nine years ago, it was, uh, it's basically a conflict of interest thing. I, I was elected in the position of the assistant chief operator and I can't better myself from that position for, for up to a year after I'm out of politics, so. That's, that's why I'm not an option for you guys.
Okay.
I, I do hold a grade four license as part of, and Dennis has part of DEP regulations and Peter's the next one up with a license, but he's still an operator in training with a temporary, uh, standard for our site-specific, like Scott was saying, so.
And, and Joyce, like I talked to you the other day at the town hall, there's kind of two sides of the spectrum in this operation, where you have the rules and regulations on one side and the office working. On the other side, we have the mechanics of it and the field work and, you know, I, and as I said to you, I, I feel Peter's very capable of handling the, uh, reports at DEP, all the internal operations inside the building. We're giants out in the field and his knowledge and the time he's been there and what he knows, it's, it's incredible. Uh, so he is working with the temporary individual over there every day, taking him out on the road, showing him this, the pump stations, showing him the pipeline, how to make repairs and how to fix everything out in the field that, you know, eventually we're gonna lose when John retires. So, uh, I'm very grateful that John is capable of doing that and training out in the field. Dennis kind of worked with Peter at the plant, showing him that aspect of it, but obviously the field part is probably more important even, and John, like I said, is very grateful that John is here and is able to work with these guys. He, he is available all the time for us, he, he comes, if he is not available, we call him for advice and he can walk somebody through. So I, I think moving forward, we're, we're gonna be all right in this, I, I think we're gonna come through and we're not gonna have any trouble.
Yep, I agree with you, I think, you know, John, you're, you're a wealth of information on, on mechanics and how to take care of all of this equipment, so that's a real asset to, to the town and.
You know, you got, you had two 40, you know, 38, 40 years of experience between Dennis and myself, you know, each.
Yep.
And, you know, the, the problem is, and I've told you before, we needed to plan for this a long time ago, not, not when we need it right now, you know?
Yeah.
I had mentioned in through school with the science classes, with math classes, with, with, with all, anything that's related to water and sewer to get these guys in there and start training them if there's anybody interested. And they'll need to do it right now, I mean, you know, once I'm gone, you know, the, these guys are younger, but not that much younger, you know? The, the, you're gonna need, you're going to need more employees for water and wastewater, somewhere down the road here eventually, you know?
Yep, I agree.
All right, David, I, I know Peter's here, I think he wanted to say something.
Here, go ahead.
Hi there. Outside at the we, we go on our first one. Grateful and I'm bound for, um, to next, uh, chief position, interim position that I, I'm, nah, for this since I moved on, uh, wastewater. And, and Dennis and John, awful lot and, uh, need to, uh, and not, uh, by, um, or, um, so I wanna say thank you, the vote of confidence to, to, um, my video.
You're, you're breaking up a little bit there Peter, at least on my end.
And too, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm outside.
All right, well, uh, appreciate you coming, that's, that's definitely appreciated. Um, any questions for Peter, Scott, Carolyn on this before we vote? All right, Jennifer, roll call please, or can I get a motion please?
Make a motion to accept Peter as the, uh, chief operator of the sewer treatment plant.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joyce, second by Amy, any other discussion? Jennifer, roll call?
Roll call Phil.
Yes.
Nevinsmith.
Yes.
Chunglo.
Yes.
Woskevitz.
I'm staying.
And Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and, um, Linda, I don't see Linda yet, so we'll keep on going. Uh, Scott, do you need to be here for the culverts for the ARPA or not?
Uh, Carolyn asked me to, uh, hang around for that and if there's any question on the, uh, or something else to, uh, the warrant items, I believe, so I, I, I'm all set David, just go.
Let's do 5.1 textile recycling program, if those, those folks are here. Anybody here for that?
Yeah.
Kathy Nelson.
Yeah, Kathy Nelson, I'm here.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Tell us about the program.
All right, well, it's actually three, three things are happening. The state has added three, two items to the waste ban list, which means like as of November of, uh, 1st of 2022, this will go into effect. Right now, mattresses and textiles, clothing rugs or cloth rugs, towels, sheets, all that kind of stuff, people are throwing in the trash. I mean, some people take it to Salvation Army and whatever, but it's allowed to go in the trash and it's become a huge problem. So the state is banning those things from the trash as of November. So what we need to do, what they want us to do is put some textile collection boxes on town property. We need to put a couple at the transfer station and then they're suggesting we put them on other town properties. Some towns are putting them at the schools, but I guess what I've heard through the grapevine is Annie McKenzie doesn't want that. So I'm suggesting we put two at the transfer station, two at the Russell School, there's like the little, a little place where you can pull over and it wouldn't block traffic into the high school or anything, and then two up at the North Hadley, um, Fire Substation.
Butter building name.
I'm sorry? Oh, and this is free of charge. Um, right now, uh, Planet Aid has, and the Legion has three Planet Aid boxes in their parking lot. And according to what the Planet Aid salesperson I spoke to told me, they took in $4,400 last year from, from what was collected there. These, these people pay five cents a pound for the textiles they collect and it doesn't cost the town anything to have the boxes. So it is a little revenue stream, but more importantly, we need to provide our residents with a way to recycle this stuff. So, uh, there are three companies in our area, Planet Aid, Bay State Textiles, who operate in our area, I should say, and another company, CRMK. After researching all three, I think we should go with Bay State Textiles. They have a plus A rating with Better Business Bureau. Uh, they're already coming to this area, they have a couple boxes, um, at Amherst High School, UMass has a couple boxes, ton of boxes in Chickopee, Southampton, East Hampton and Holyoke. And, um, what else were we gonna tell you about them? I just like them, their boxes are, they're the only one whose boxes are labeled clothing, shoes and linens. And if you're a rule follower like me, like the boxes that only say clothing, I would never put pillows and blankets in there, because it just says clothing. So, and we want people to put all of those things in these textile collection boxes. So anyway, they pay five cents a pound, um, will receive money from them once a month and a tonnage report, which is important, because I need to report that to Mass DEP. Um, and that's, that's about it on textiles, we just need to sign somebody up, you know, get some textile boxes out there. The thing about mattresses, that's not really gonna change for residents. People who have a sticker can still take their mattress to the transfer station as usual, people that are, um, have, you know, private subscription. People that are um have, you know, private subscription for their hauler. I, I talked to USA and they don't pick up mattresses, but they have somebody they refer people to. How it's gonna change is what the haulers do with the mattresses, once they've collected them. So probably next year, the price will go up at our transfer station because it's gonna be more they have to be transported now, the clean, the ones that are acceptable have to go to a recycling facility rather than just the, you know, wherever, wherever Patrick Kennedy takes the trash, only the contaminated mattresses can go there. So, you know, that's just like something we have to work out with him, make sure he's gonna actually do it. Uh fortunately, he already has a trailer at the transfer station. A lot of the trans um, transfer stations are all freaking out because they have to buy a storage container, which is one there and they're not nicely lined up, so I haven't talked to him yet, but hopefully he, he knows about this change and he's preparing for it. Um, so that's about it.
So, and, and who, who thought up the idea of putting the boxes up at the North Hadley Fire Station?
Actually Jane Nevin Smith came up with that idea.
I'm not exactly sure that's a great place to be putting it where it's um people going in and out of there. It's not really a secure area. I don't want it to be a dumping ground, as you can tell for some of these uh when they get overflowed and they're not picked up, there's stuff all around.
Um, well, one good thing about this company, what I like about them is they'll pick up once a week. Anything extra, you know, like some people, they're just can't help themselves. They leave strollers or whatever thinking they're being helpful, I guess, I don't know. Whatever's left on the outside, they will take. Um, and if, if actual textile overflow, if that happens very often, then they'll call us and say, you know, you're overflowing every week. We need to put another box there. Um, so as far as that part is concerned, it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a huge problem.
So I, I have two issues with it and I think it's great to recycle the clothing, but one, one is like Joyce mentioned, the drop boxes for Goodwill or whoever it is that are behind over by Starbucks there, they, they're constantly overflowing. There's stuff that people just dump around there and uh I'm, I'm not sure we want that in the center of town where it's, where it's visible. And the other issue is like Joyce said, the North Hadley Station. Uh generally, our police officers and anybody else in town keeps a close eye on who's hanging out in that parking lot. And really, there shouldn't be anybody in that parking lot unless they're there for business, so.
Oh, definitely.
It's uh, I'm, I'm not sure that we want that sort of traffic i- in the parking lot, that, that's.
Yeah, well, one thing that's gonna happen is, and you know, it may not act, I, I think we do need to have at least one box at the transfer station. Um, otherwise.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
That's where it should be, yes.
Right, the town is required, whatever our municipal um program for trashes, which in Hadley, it's the transfer station, we gotta put a box there. As far as around town, I mean, one thing's gonna happen is this regulation applies to everyone, not just municipalities, but haulers. So I suspect what's gonna happen is USA and all the various private haulers are going to have to offer, you know, to, to their customers that they, they can put their, their textiles out for recycling. Um, you know, I'm not sure how that's gonna work out. It, it might take a while to get going or whatever, but it may end up that we don't really need the boxes around town. Um I don't know how much people are already doing it, you know, I mean, we have Salvation Army right there and then around the corner is Goodwill. Three boxes at the Legion.
The Holy Redeemer Church has one also.
Oh, do they? And I know there's uh two or a large Planet Aid box um at Pulse Restaurant.
Yeah, clothing and the one at the church takes clothing, uh bedding, shoes, anything of that nature.
Yep.
Do, do you have to be a transfer station customer? I am assuming to drop textiles at the transfer station?
Well, that's one thing, you know, at some point I wanted to talk with you guys about is that um you know, right now, yes, you have to be a full sticker holder, you know, maybe at some point, we wanna offer a reduced rate sticker to people who don't bring their regular trash and recycling there, but say you do have a, I mean, also Valley Recycling is in North Hampton and you can go there for free. You can take any of this kind of stuff there for free, but you know, for somebody who wants to use.
Free over at Valley.
Well, I mean, you have to pay per item, but you don't have to have.
There you go, yes.
Yeah, you don't, right, but you don't have to have a sticker to go there.
Uh huh.
So, yeah, right now, in order to get what, you know, go through that gate, you need a sticker. There's no you know, reduced or, or free thing for that.
That was one, one of the thoughts about putting a box somewhere on town property for people who don't have the sticker so that they could use it.
So is it possible to put a box at, at least there outside the fence where people, non sticker holders could use it and that way if people are turning it into a dumping ground, we can keep an eye on it and not have to worry about it at the center of town? I don't know.
Well, one of the things about the North Hadley Fire Station is they have surveillance and if somebody starts dumping, they're gonna know who it is and can trace them right down and go after them.
I don't think we should be, I don't think we should be having traffic going in and out of there. I, I just don't feel that that's safe and I think we should ask uh Chief Spank Enable his opinion on that before we do anything.
Well, I agree with that.
I'm not in favor of, of that particular site right now.
Yeah, I, I'd be for a couple at the dump because everyone I've seen, the planet ones, the yellow planet ones have been overflowing and the snowplows smash all the stuff that's laying around them. It gets scattered all over where those boxes are. I've seen them in numerous places and numerous towns and they're a mess all the time.
Yeah, I've never noticed the Planet Aid boxes being a mess, but I know there's a couple of um Kid Education boxes over in the, on the side of the Walmart parking lot. And there's always, it's not overflow, it's stuff, people shouldn't be leaving there. I'm sorry?
Property, I, I, I think, you know, they, they might work out if somebody's watching them. On public property, the DPW's taxed out enough as it is and we don't need to be cleaning up trash. All right, it out, you know?
Yeah, yeah, there's the Salvation Army, there's the Goodwill in North Hampton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. David? Yep. I just wanted to comment on, John kind of touched on it. Outside the landfill there, we do have dumping problems now, so I'm not sure if that's the best location. It's probably gonna make the dumping problem worse. Okay.
Right, I mean, at least at the transfer station, there's an attendant there.
Yeah.
So, and the trash is right there, so if people have stuff that really shouldn't go in the textile collection box anyway, they can just throw it away.
I just say put a couple of boxes down there that would benefit us more.
Okay.
And, and maybe we can work it out with the transfer station people that since this is um
There.
This, this is generating revenue, then maybe they'll let people use those boxes if they're not a sticker holder since they're just dropping off the textiles, it's not costing the transfer station money.
Maybe, I mean, that's just something that, you know, I guess when you are working up a new contract with Patrick um or, you know, I'll be happy to talk with him about it. I don't, I don't know who wants to talk with him about it. It might also you know, if the boxes are placed there, but he is the one to do it rather than the town, then that extra revenue stream going to him might offset what it's gonna cost him to transport mattresses to a recycling facility. So I don't know, it's like for you guys to figure out how you wanna do that, but um anyway, of the three ta- uh companies, I recommend Bay State. Um, and I can get, I, I've already given uh Jennifer the information. We've talked about this before. Um, Planet Aid, interestingly enough, Charity Watch, our uh Mass D E P advisor brought this to my attention. Chair, uh Planet Aid, Charity Watch gave Planet Aid an F. Apparently they have a very sketchy um bookkeeping system. And the Better Business Bureau gave them no accreditation whatsoever. So I just feel like
Yeah.
even if they give good local service, I just did not feel right telling you guys, oh, let's use Planet Aid, you know?
Yeah.
And Bay State Textiles is just pristine. They've been in business for like forty something years and A plus with Business, Better Business Bureau, a ton of recommendation letters and I just think, well, we won't have any problems with them.
All right, so do we need to vote on um Bay State Textiles and at least starting at the transfer station to start with or, or?
I'll, I'll make a motion to that effect to put a couple of boxes at the transfer station and then um have Kathy set up something with textiles if that's um.
I think actually Jennifer's the one that would do that, but I mean, I will.
I'll make a motion on your recommendation that this, this happens uh for the transfer station.
I'll second.
All right, so a motion by Joyce, second by Jane, and any other discussion on this?
Roll call vote. Uh, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Chungloo?
Yes.
Waskevitz?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh Kathy, thank you for uh coming.
Oh, you're very welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, and uh looks like Amy's here, is Linda here? Not quite.
I'm here.
Oh, there she is. Okay, so we're good. Let's go back to uh four point one ban.
Oh, this, okay, the ban. This will be quick. This is just a heads up that our annual borrowing is coming up. And I wanted to let you know that the ban that's coming due was for seven hundred eighty-seven thousand one seventy-five. Of that, we're going to be able to pay down three hundred ten thousand eight sixty-one, which is not quite half, but it's a good dent in our last years, which is why we have the um this is, which is why we have added extra money in on the debt and interest so that we can begin, so we can be getting rid of more of our prior borrowings. Um, we thought we were gonna have a lot more in additional borrowings going in, but as it turns out, we only have um about five hundred sixty-seven thousand in new. A big difference of this, I think was only a week or two ago that we were talking about the potential of borrowing for the sewer and the Route Nine Sewer and Water Lines, which alone would have been over a million. And it looks like the timing of the project and the timing of the bills, which is a month after the project begins, that we're going to be okay uh not doing uh borrowing in those areas during this year, which is great. That takes a million off the current borrowing. Even though the um interest rate is not that high, interest rate is zero on the funds that you're not borrowing, and so it's really, it's always better. Um, and so the amount of the total ban's gonna be just over a million dollars. And the reason I wanna give you the heads up is because we don't have the in-person meetings. When the ban, when the paperwork is done, it will be May eighteenth, I believe, is when we're selling the ban and the paperwork will be in within a few days after that. We'll need all of you to come in and sign it so that we can go on and wrap up. They um wrap up that borrowing. So if you, if you're planning to be away somewhere there at the end of May, uh uh get in touch with uh Jennifer or one of us so that we make sure that we've got three people who can sign uh the borrowing.
Sounds good. Perfect, thank you.
Sure.
And looks like um Amy's here and you wanna hit the warrant while everyone's here from finance as well? Or are we waiting on more people from finance, Amy?
Oh, uh, so I don't, no, nobody else will be, I don't believe anyone else is coming from finance.
Okay, all right, so do you guys wanna, why don't we do the warrant so that we don't have to hang out through all the other stuff?
Or did you, did you start the warrant? We just finished going through the warrant ourselves and we just finished voting.
We were waiting just in case you guys wanted to jump on and talk about anything that happened in finance. Um, or if you wanna just give us a quick rundown of what you did in finance and where, where we are, that's okay too.
Okay, so uh, yeah, I'll just go through and tell you where we were with finance. We just finished, um, we went through article um, one through sixteen, um, and we just put our votes in. Pretty much everything was for the majority passed with just a couple of things that we just um there was a couple um items that uh there was different feelings on, but everything uh pretty much passed. Um, the actual, what you're interested in pretty much is the budget, where we are with that. Um that is Linda has a, will probably be showing you all that um budget. Um, I guess where we stood on that, the only thing that came up was just, it was a the, but the main budget passed, it was uh for uh for it and then one, one against on some things. And that would be me, so let me just tell you just in case you see an odd number there and what that means. Um, basically on the budget, the only thing I had concerns about was we have a budget that is about we're using, um, we were using about eight hundred thousand to balance it, right? We're upside down. So it was at one point four hundred from free cash, four hundred from the ARPA money. So what happened was we did come down by fifty thousand, so now we're uh with the O P E B and we said, we'll push that O P E B, we can fund a lot of it, but we're gonna it by fifty thousand, so we're gonna maybe do it in the fall, um, just in case, okay? So we pushed that off a little bit. Other than, so now it's three hu- funding, using three hundred and fifty in free cash and four hundred in ARPA money to balance the budget. My only suggestion was, in, in my opinion, was to on um, on page nineteen in your general budget book, it showed that we had um two things, um, two larger uh new hires. Um, big new hires and that was the ambulance new hire and the police new hire. So that was about eighty thousand for each of those and, and it was just me thinking, I'd like, those are great new hires. But I was looking to push those off a little bit too because um union negotiations haven't happened yet and it has had a lot of talk about being competitive in the marketplace. Where it's looks like, and I think every industry's going through this right now with uh salaries being low and we need to look at adjusting our salaries. It's, it's been talked about quite a bit and losing people and, and need to take care of the people that we have. Um, so a lot of those are gonna be happening. That has not been addressed in this budget. The only thing in this budget really that you're seeing, like for town hall people, um for uh the, the police, for the DPW, that's just the COLA. Um, pretty much is what we're seeing is, is the COLA, um, which is the two point five percent increase. The fire did have an increase um as far as a promotion to help get them in a better spot on two of their people, which we uh said that's, that looks great, so they are working towards that to, to to boost those um salaries, but other than that, um, we felt that it was a very good budget. And I, we felt that the uh um were very responsible, all the departments, and they did an excellent job on presenting a budget to us. Um, we don't really have, I think there were very small increases, um you know, such as the library had a small request for an increase on hours, um Council on Aging had a small request to replace Jane um for a part-time person. We had um a small request from Town Hall for some extra hours. Those were, they were not any big positions, they were just a few added hours, pretty much. Or a part-time thing wasn't anything big, so the only two uh big things that we have going on were just um those two new positions. But the budget looks good and um, and uh right now Linda has the budget for you to look at and just think that next year, um, you know, and, and going forward, you know, we gotta look at uh what we're using to balance it, you know, we don't wanna, uh, you know, hopefully our income comes back. You know, it has been coming back, so it is stronger, stronger now. Um, so, um, but um, we won't be using that ARPA money down the road. Any questions?
Uh, no. Uh, are we going over the, the warrant at all tonight? Are we gonna do that? We're gonna have that meeting next week to, to iron that out?
We, we can, we can go over it if you would like, um, I, I was in.
I think we should do it next week. I don't, you know, that wasn't on the agenda tonight, actually.
Yeah, under uh six point one warrant review, I just wanna make sure that we didn't, um, I, I know we got the draft sent to us today, but Yeah, under uh six point one warrant review, I just want to make sure that we didn't, um, I I know we got the draft sent to us today, but what we need to do is set a meeting for next week, either Tuesday or Wednesday, to go over the, basically just a meeting for the warrant, to go over it, vote on it and uh sign and post it.
And actually divvy up whatever we're gonna do also.
Right, so do you guys just want to do Wednesday at uh the normal time, six o'clock or?
That would be fine.
I can't do Wednesday next week at six.
How about Tuesday?
I could do seven.
How about Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Tuesday I could do.
I can't do Tuesday. I have four each meeting.
Okay, how about uh?
We kind of set aside Wednesdays because we keep kind of changing and being off and on.
Yeah, you want to do seven o'clock?
It's called being flexible, Amy. You learned that in nursing. Anyway. I'll do Wednesday at seven.
Is that okay with uh everybody else? John? Jane, you're good with that?
That that sounds good.
Say that again?
You'll make an exception for town meeting, he said.
Oh, okay, alright. And uh is that okay with Linda and Carol?
I I not gonna be there next week.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, actually, and if, you know, if it's not, um, I'm actually gonna be out for a few weeks, so.
Okay, alright, well then, we'll have to go on without you for that meeting.
Well, I'll leave it easy to set up.
Okay.
Thank you.
To make um one request, if you are going to, um, if there's something different from the budget part um, and you request um not to do something on the budget or you're looking to do something else, the finance group has asked that um we can, you know, um, meet again before the town meeting. Um, so far, they put it together exactly as the town administrator requested, and that's what went through. So unless it's something that you would like to not have through, um, finance would just like to weigh in on it again.
So both finance and select board, but I don't really see us having any issues as far as the the budget at this point, but just to be safe, if you guys want to be there, that's fine, but it's up, it's up to you.
I think we're just looking for numbers, Amy, and the bottom lines and go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Sounds good. Anything else on the warrant before we go on? Alright, let's go to uh, uh, well, thank you, Amy, for coming. Um, let's go to uh five point two, ARPA set aside for culverts. Um, Carolyn and Scott will discuss several emergency culvert failures and the use of ARPA for funding.
Yeah, Scott, I can kind of uh give the little intro of what what we've been experiencing last week and what the recommendation is, but you will you'll have the more specifics. Um, last week, we had two uh culvert, what what we've um considered failures that need to get addressed immediately. We have gotten approval from the state to move forward with that. Uh, but we don't have is funding for those projects, and that is something we've been talking a lot about as far as directing some of that money, requesting to have some of that ARPA money um directed towards some of the culverts that we have. And there there are multiple ones that um Scott has certainly pointed out to me and and you know, certainly uh recognize that you can't do all of them, but there are some more critical ones that um would not be emergency, but we would like to move forward with allocating ARPA funds if the board approves and that those we'd like to ask for approximately about three hundred thousand dollars to set aside from the ARPA funds to help pay for some of those repairs. Um, Scott, maybe this is a good time for you to kind of pinpoint some of those areas that you you're most concerned about.
Okay, yeah, uh, so right now on Newton Lane, we have a pretty significant failure there uh with some drainage. Uh, I'm working with uh a local contractor to try to come up with a remedy to fix that. Uh, so that's in the process and we've had a failure on Bay Road. The culverts between Middle Street and East Street and uh that one is in very bad condition. Uh, it's actually developing sinkholes. Uh, the one on East, uh, the one on Bay Road rather, uh, and it also has the water main runs directly through the culvert. So uh next week, we're gonna begin the process of uh moving the water main, uh, on digging it up and moving it underneath the culvert so we can line the culvert, uh, sleeve lining the culvert. It's gonna be a lot cheaper than replacing it because the head are actually in really good condition. So as we just went through on Knightly, we know head walls are uh costly to build. So with this one, we're just gonna be able to put a liner inside and they, they're gonna fill it with grout to fill in any voids and there'll be a piece of plastic and there should uh last the rest of our lives, I hope. Uh, but there's some other ones we're having trouble with, uh. And I've I've looked at it with a local contractor that we could possibly supply them. Uh, there's one on South Maple Street, uh, one on Farm Lane, one on Sunrise, and one on East Street. Uh, that are in relatively uh bad shape. So it's just, just the tip of the iceberg with this. The, these are all around town, they're the same vintage, the same and they are all rot and they are all in really bad shape. Uh, I did find some uh paperwork when going through some files and I I gave it to Carolyn to look at. There was some uh engineering back, I believe, when Marlo was here, uh, that they came in and did an assessment on them and there is, there is some documentation of how bad these culverts really are and doesn't look like anything was ever brought forward with it. But as time goes on, they're just getting a lot worse.
But didn't, didn't last year and within the last year and a half, a lot of those culverts were all dug out. I remember seeing the machine at many of the different culverts around town at different times, um, cleaning out those, all those culverts. So was this all brought to your, everybody's attention at that point, um, that they were in bad shape or?
Joyce, well, Joyce, what had happened was they cleaned down both sides of the culverts.
Yeah.
All the rain we've had in the last year or so since we cleaned them out, washed the inside of the culverts out in a lot of situations where they exposed the rot on the bottom of the pipes because they were so full, they really couldn't be inspected at the time we were digging them. Over a period of the last year or so, that's when we've been, Scott's been going around and inspecting all of these and finding out how bad they really are.
I remember them digging them all out within the last, like I said, year and a half and doing the cleanings of all the culverts that they could get to. Um, that was a big project there for a year's time, you know, when you had the machinery there at those.
Yep, yeah, Joyce, like John, John said when we did that, we, it it wasn't in the scope of work, the clean the culvert itself, we cleaned on both sides of it and just with the natural increase of flow and everything, they they kind of washed themselves out. And uh now that uh they're washed out, uh, you know, pe- we get calls with sinkholes and things like that. And when we go look at them, you can really see how bad they are. Uh, like I said, there was some of the ones that are in the documentation that I gave to Carolyn, uh, they were inspected uh by an engineering firm. I I don't know what brought this study on or or what the reasoning was, but there is some documentation, like I said, that uh shows that the failure rate of the culverts. There, I mean, there is some that are right, but I'd say the majority of them are not. Uh, and some of them are pretty good size and uh traffic flows, obviously, a problem like like Bay Road, very heavily traveled road.
Yeah.
You know, just, that's where sleeve lining comes in to affect to the uh the traffic impacted.
It's a lot cheaper than to replace the pipes. I understand that.
Yeah, it, especially, especially when the head walls are good and but the only thing that stinks on this Bay Road one was that they literally cut a hole through the pipe and jammed the water main through it, so we cannot sleeve line it unless we move the water main and that's gonna be a project in itself. Uh, so, you know, i- this isn't a uh a cheap thing. Uh, the ones that I looked at with the contractor, they're around thirty thousand or so. That's just for the materials and them doing their thing. That does involve the little odds and ends stuff that goes along with it, so. I don't know, I'm think, I'm thinking, you know, forty, forty-five thousand apiece maybe, you know, to to do something, so.
Okay.
But we have to, we have to definitely uh
It's gotta get down.
The 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 most impacted ones, like uh South Maple Street, another one where uh there's utilities that can be uh damaged and et cetera, you know, Farm Lane and Sunrise, well, they're not in the best of shape. Can they wait? We're gonna definitely have to do our homework and decide uh which ones need the most attention and the fastest.
Yeah.
But Bay, Bay Road right now is uh uh in the motions, along with uh Newton Lane.
Okay, sounds good. You need an approval or we just going for it? This is just informational for us tonight?
No, I would like, a vote would be better to you, to allocate those ARPA funds for three hundred thousand for culvert repair.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay.
Any other discussion on culverts? Or ARPA funds? Alright, Jennifer, roll call please. Uh, is she there?
Roll call Phil?
Thank you, yes.
Roll call Nevinsmith?
Yes.
Chungalo?
Yes.
Wiskavitz?
I'll abstain, you got enough of votes.
Okay, and Parsons?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright. Thanks, Scott. Let's go to five point four, Russell School Committee, and select board will create a Russell School Committee and discuss its mem- its makeup of its membership, um, and then we will uh appoint that committee on May eighteenth. And so tonight, all I'd like to do is decide on how many residents are gonna be on that committee, who, what uh departments are gonna be in that committee, and we'll put the announcement out there like we typically do for, you know, a couple of you know, when the new board's sitting here on May eighteenth, they can make the decision of who's appointed to that committee. So who do we want on this committee? I imagine.
Historical, historical society.
Yep.
Conservation. Select Board. Municipal Building Committee.
Does uh Conservation need to be on there since it's not a really?
No, no, they don't. No, cross them off. I got carried away there for a minute.
That's okay.
Um, municipal, uh, uh, anybody from well, Gary Berg's on municipal, so that would be DPW.
Do we want the building inspector?
He could if he would like to join us, yes.
Yeah, sure.
And somebody from maintenance.
Well, Gary Berg's on the municipal, said should be on it, so they can choose. We can have a couple of people from them on there if they choose to.
Yeah, I think I see Dan on here too tonight. I don't know if he's interested in it, but.
That would be appointed, right? And I mean, and we could have some citizens, could have three, three citizens maybe.
Yeah, sure, three, that sounds like a good number. Bill?
You probably want someone from Planning Board because of the allowed uses or the disallowed uses.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yep.
Okay, Planning Board.
Alright.
Diana, that's her, Andrea's.
Diana?
Hi, everyone. This is Diana West. I am chairperson of the Historical Commission. I have at least two commission members who are interested on joining this committee. So we were hoping to have some representation there.
We will definitely have one committee member. I don't know if we're gonna be able to have everybody from every committee, because otherwise this is gonna be a massive undertaking to get people together, but you absolutely will have somebody from the historical on on the committee.
Thank you.
Yep.
David, if it's possible, can like Gary do a dual road, uh, represent the DPW as long as the building committee? And that we don't need to be overly involved. I guess Gary handles that kind of stuff anyways.
Yeah, I know, Dan, Dan Regish and um Alan Weinberger are passionate about this too, so I'm sure they would love to represent the Municipal Building Committee and Gary can do DPW or or however they want to figure it out.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So, um, alright, so three members of the community, does that sound reasonable? Alright, and so if anybody from the community would like to be on it, um, send an email to info@hadleyma.org. That goes to Jennifer and then she'll collect them all and send them to the select board. Don't, don't call us individually. Email us individually, uh, it it all needs to go through Jennifer or it's not official, okay?
David, one more thing is, uh, one of our reports that went out to the select board some time ago recommended that Historical Commission meet with CPA to gather consensus on what additional preservation projects could be undertaken until such time the building is repurposed. So definitely CPA should, someone from CPA should be on that committee as well.
Okay. I see Carolyn writing. Carolyn, are you making a list? Because, alright, just to be sure. Alright, so we'll go ahead and put that, we don't need to vote on this, I don't think. We just put it out there and then we'll uh appoint it on the eighteenth.
That's fine.
Alright, anything else on this?
I'd just like to thank Select Board for for putting this upfront. This is something that's you know, visible to not just this town, but everybody from all those surrounding towns go by this building all the time, and we need to have something done with it.
Yep, time to stop kicking that can down the road. We keep pushing it up and it keeps getting pushed back, so.
Thanks, thanks again, Select Board members.
Um, alright, so we'll move on to five point five, uh Ukrainian flag discussion. Jane Nevinsmith will discuss flying the Ukrainian flag in support of Ukraine.
Jane? Yes, um, we took this off the agenda two weeks ago because we were busy and certainly could wait. Um, but because of the um support in this town for the Ukrainian position and our roots for many of us to Poland and that neighborhood, there's a lot of concern that we support the Ukrainian people in their fight for freedom and democracy. And I think it would be a first, has actually done all the paperwork and uh, the proclamation sorts of things, if we choose to do this, it would be easy enough for us to carry forth and make a proclamation.
Okay, thoughts?
I'm not actually in favor of, um, it's not that I'm not in support of the Ukraine people. I'm not in support of flying it on our town pole. We only have two sets of whatever we can fly and basically, most federal and state buildings fly the American flag and not any other flag. We have two sets of clips that we fly, fly the American flag and the uh town flag on our flagpole. If we want to have a Ukrainian flag, I think it might be appropriate for us to put it on the uh railing of Town Hall so that it is visible to people when they go by our Town Hall in support of uh Ukraine, but I don't think it needs to be flown on our flagpole. Um, uh, and there are many other ways that um people from around here, um, there's many ways to um, show your support by many organizations for the Ukraine people, and I suggest that they um, take part in doing this, whether it be monetary or whatever. People are collecting money, they're collecting food, um, anything else that you see all around with WWLP, there's many uh things, but that would be my suggestion is that we have it on our uh railing at Town Hall so that people can see it as they go by also. It doesn't necessarily have to be uh flown from our our flagpole, um, but it is, it is, it is visible. Would that be?
I think that would be fine. I just think we need to have it visible and and say that we are.
One side or the other of the rails of the front staircase.
Yeah, I think that would be a very appropriate for us to to do that.
There before and we got rid of that fence at Russell School, which carried a lot of weight, you might say. We've had a lot of advertising and a lot of things hanging on that fence and we need to decide to put something up on that other corner there for a lot of these.
So let's.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna be the jerk here and I come regardless of your personal opinions and regardless of your political stances, municipal buildings and taxpayer-funded areas have to be impartial regardless. And I'm sorry, but that's just how it is. You can't do And I'm sorry, but that's just how it is. You can't do anything political on town property. I'm sorry. And regardless of how I feel about it, this, I mean, this is other people's places of employment. I'm not saying that they do or don't disagree, but you can't have a political way shape or form on.
Is, is there, is there, is, where did you pull that from, Amy?
Can you put your signs for Select Board? You can't do it. I'm sorry. You can't have political statements on property.
We have a political statement flying from our flag right now with the children's flag that went up two weeks ago.
Children's advocacy.
Yeah, that's a political statement. It's flying from our flag pole.
And that was done with the state representatives being there with the DA actually was also there. So I mean, I, I think we can, uh, we, let's, let's look into it. Uh, let's get a ruling, um, if that's, um, okay.
Something to say.
Yeah, what does Mitch say?
This is actually a subject matter that came up in, uh, unrelated meeting from Town Council and I think Joyce, you already said it about looking into it. But, um, Town Council had, would have something to say relative to a flag policy.
Okay.
Is that on a flag pole or anywhere?
I think, I, uh, I, I can't say specifically.
Okay, well, let's, let's, uh, have, let's chime in. Could we make a phone call tomorrow, Carolyn?
I can do that, yes.
Okay.
If, if, let, can I ask to go further? Uh, if there is not an issue, um, can you guys make a, like a, a, a vote that if there is no issue to move forward or do you want me to wait until next week?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, to, uh, hang it on the Town Hall if there's no issue.
On the railing.
On the railing.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by John and second by Jane. Any other discussion?
No, and again, that's with, uh, the attorney's approval.
Okay. All right, uh, Jennifer, roll call please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Changeloo?
Yes.
Weskevitz?
Yeah.
And Parsons?
No.
Thank you.
And we have six point two plastic bag ban. And I thought I saw Bruce Brewer here and uh, Jack, so, um, guys, go ahead.
Okay, I'll start off, um, I'm representing the, uh, Hadley Climate, uh, Committee. And, um, just wanna use this, uh, this opportunity to review, uh, what we're really calling as a, um, end of plastic pollution or a plastic reduction. So the eliminating, uh, single-use plastic bags is within the bylaws, but it's, it's kind of a bigger issue than that. So before I get into actually talking about the specifics of the bylaws, I thought I'd do, um, an overview. And I first just wanna comment about, uh, efforts of the Climate Change Committee in general. Uh, this kind of speaks to the educational piece, uh, this coming Saturday, for example, we have a an all-day Climate Day event at the Hadley Senior Center, um, where we have speakers coming in, we're engaging, um, teachers, students, uh, residents of Hadley, um, to really, uh, become more educational about, uh, what we can do, uh, within our homes, within our community to reduce, uh, not only, uh, plastic waste, but, um, carbon footprints and all kinds of things. So, uh, it's certainly education is, uh, an important aspect of what we're doing and these bylaws is just another tool in the toolbox of how we can make, uh, change. So why are we proposing these bylaws, the Climate Change Committee? And, uh, to finally simply put it, uh, there's just too much trash, um. One of our committee members, uh, mentioned that to me and, uh, it does resonate that there just is too much trash and single-use plastic bags and throwaway styrofoam cups, plastic straws are a good part of that trash and nationwide, only five point two percent of, uh, plastic bags ever get recycled. Um, in the state of Massachusetts, uh, Massachusetts bans already glass, metal, and plastic containers, uh, to go into our, um, transfer station and in our, um, uh, waste and, uh, the reason why plastic bags, uh, styrofoam plastic straws aren't on this list is because, uh, they're considered, um, unsafe for the dual-stream, uh, recycling process, both single and dual because they are, uh, what they call, uh, tanglers, uh, they just, uh, uh, junk up the machinery. So that's why when you go to the Hadley Transfer Station, you're not gonna see a separate bin for, uh, single-use plastic bags or a separate bin for, uh, plastic straws and, um, styrofoam. So even though, uh, the gentleman was correct, uh, you can go to, uh, Stop and Shop or Big Y, for example, and bring back your, uh, single-use plastic bags to be recycled. Very few people do it. Um, again, only five point two percent of resi- uh, single-use plastic bags ever get recycled. And so where did they end up? They end up, they end up as litter, um. The, uh, about a week and a half ago, when we did, uh, climate, uh, or our trash pickup day here in Hadley, um, one of our, uh, committee members, uh, reported that, uh, um, well over a hundred, a hundred fifty, uh, single-use plastic bags were part of that trash pickup. So that, that is, uh, part of our litter here in Hadley. So, um, so we can't just, uh, think it's happening in other towns. It's happening here as well. So again, uh, they end up in our, uh, transfer station and they aren't getting, uh, recycled. Um, as I mentioned the last time, uh, plastic, uh, takes hundreds, uh, to a thousand years to ever break down. And when they do break down, uh, they break down into microplastics, which are very, um, hazardous to, uh, our environment and into human life. And even though, uh, some of the alternatives to, uh, plastic generate a large, uh, excuse me, carbon footprint in terms of manufacturing such as tote bags or paper bags, um, um, plastic bags, um, are worse for the environment because not only do they take millions of gallons of oil to produce, uh, they, they generate, uh, microplastics, they never break down and they just end in their environment. So they're forever, uh, with us. So, um, sort of the best, uh, way of thinking about this is, uh, the best bag to use when, when it comes time to, uh, check out bags is again, the bag that you already own. So, um, we don't want you to go out and, uh, necessarily, um, buy new bags if you already have a bag, uh, so even though, uh, there's been some reports that, uh, uh, these, uh, cotton tote bags could get, uh, dirty, um, or they have germs, uh, none of that has, uh, proven, uh, to be a, a public, uh, concern to the community at large. Um, and then, uh, when it came to the pandemic, if there was a concern as it happened in this state and other states, they just would, uh, stop, um, temporarily using, um, uh, cotton tote bags, uh, because of the concern about, uh, the pandemic. So, uh, in terms of, um, food containers, um, when it comes to hot and cold cups, um, uh, when it comes to, uh, foodware, the best, uh, alternative is, um, uh, plastic that can be, uh, recycled or, um, paper or cardboard containers that can be compostable or recycled. Uh, we don't wanna use styrofoam and in fact, um, I'd say many of the restaurants in Hadley and throughout the Pineapple Valley have already converted. Um, when I go out to restaurants myself, um, and have anything that's, uh, taken home, I rarely, uh, see, uh, styrofoam being used anymore. Uh, when it comes to, uh, plastic straws, um, uh, in our bylaws, although I have to make, uh, one, uh, slight change, um, we're trying to promote the use of compostable, uh, straws. We're trying to encourage the practice that if you go in to get a drink instead of automatically getting, uh, a straw, uh, we want you to ask for one. That would be, uh, sort of the best practice. Um, if you really want a plastic straw, a, a customer can ask for one. Uh, but, uh, they won't be automatically distributed, so. So that would be in, in the bylaws and that's fairly similar to, uh, the towns around us and what they're doing. Uh, what is the financial impact on the, uh, restaurants and establishments? Um, alls I can tell you is that, um, the cost of, uh, single-use plastic bags now, uh, there is a cost to that, uh, I've seen one study that compares that expense, uh, is already fairly close to, uh, some of the alternative bags. Um, also the, um, use of, uh, lost my place, um. The other thing about, uh, and that cost, I'm sorry, the plastic bag is already passed on to the customer and has not, uh, really had a major impact to their business. Uh, just like, uh, I know Big Y is not part of Amherst, uh, but they converted over to, um, paper bags, uh, a number of years ago, and I think their business is, uh, doing as strong as, uh, ever. Uh, our bylaws have passed, would not take effect till January first, so that would allow a good, uh, amount of time for, uh, establishments to use up their inventory uh, and to seek out affordable and, and acceptable alternatives. So there would be that, give, uh, these establishments, uh, some time. And then in our bylaws, if there is a hardship, um, an establishment can, um, uh, make their, their hardship, uh, known to the town, uh, they put it in writing and the town, uh, can make a ruling and, uh, grant that, uh, a waiver if, uh, if there was a hardship. I know some of you are concerned about enforcement and, uh, who in Hadley, uh, town government is gonna enforce these bylaws? And so I think we recognize that that is, uh, a legitimate, uh, and real concern. So I think, um, as it stands now, what we would, uh, like to see is that the, uh, penalties and enforcement section of the bylaws stand. And if the town cannot enforce that part of the bylaws, then so be it, but it should still be there. Um, and, um, and I haven't seen anything in any other towns bylaws that I've looked at, and I've looked at quite a few where there is not a penalties enforcement section in it, even, uh, with some of the smaller towns. So in ending, um, I think these bylaws is just another tool in the toolbox. Um, we'll be joining dozens of other decent towns throughout the state of Massachusetts, um. As I mentioned, uh, last time, there are a number of states that have passed statewide bans. And, and there's been a couple of countries that have, uh, banned it throughout their nation. So with that, um, I'd like to end and then, uh, just answer whatever specific questions you might have.
Any questions for Bruce?
Uh, I don't have a.
Why can't the companies choose to do that on their own accord?
Say that again?
Oh, why aren't we letting companies choose to do that on their own accord?
Um, sure, I think, um, that's what has been going on, uh, at least in our town and in and, uh, actually throughout, uh, different communities throughout the country, but I think, um, as, um, we're seeing, uh, more towns every year are joining the effort to, uh, put, um, something in place to reduce plastic, uh, waste. And so I think this is just another tool. So I think education's important, which is what, uh, I think, uh, you're kind of suggesting, but I think, uh, this adds another, uh, tool in the toolbox to sort of, uh, help, uh, push some of those, uh, establishments that are reluctant, uh, to, uh, sort of take what I think is the right, uh, step forward.
What do you think is the right step forward?
Well, the right step forward would be to, uh, eliminate, uh, single-use plastics. So if you're in a restaurant, for example, and you're, um, doing, uh, a large takeout business rather than using styrofoam, uh, foodware, uh, that you would convert over to, uh, foodware that is, uh, recyclable. So that would be an example of, uh, taking the right, uh, step if you're, uh, a grocery store or a large retail business. Instead of, um, using, uh, single-use plastic bags, uh, start, uh, trying to, um, use alternative bags. So to me, that would be the right step forward because we'd be, uh, reducing, uh, plastic. And that would be eventually, um, healthier for our, uh, environment or our town if, uh, if we can reduce plastic waste.
So I'd just like to add, just to back up what Bruce is saying, that the Mass DEP wants us to have a single-use plastic ban. The, that RDP application that I do each year to that grant money. It's two points. If you have, if you have a single-use plastic bag ban, which would give us the town five hundred dollars. So it's not mandated yet, but it's coming. I mean, we just, we do, we have too much trash and we have too much plastic. Also, the problem with styrofoam, when you put hot food in styrofoam, besides the recycling nightmare that it poses, styrene is released into the food, which is toxic for human beings. So it's very unhealthy to use as foodware, but furthermore, it's very difficult to recycle 'cause it breaks up. So it, it ends up in the trash and then it's just more plastic that's gonna break that, you know, break into little pieces, but not decompose. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there, that Mass DEP would love to see us have this ban.
So is this about styrofoam now or is it about single-use plastic bags? Cause I hate out food I eat. But we haven't had styrofoam in many places for a long time.
Right, cause a lot of people are going ahead and getting rid of it 'cause it's so bad, but it's.
And a lot of restaurants in town are franchises and they have to order nationally.
Hmm, I don't think.
What is required of them? Like, they can't just use certain.
Yeah, yes, they can.
But no, I'm, I'm just saying like, there's no, like, there's not styrofoam. So I'm asking, is this about styrofoam? Cause that's what you were talking about, or is this about single-use plastic bags?
The bylaws are about, um, single-use plastic bags, styrofoam and, uh, plastic straws. And I wanted to just share, and this is anecdotal comment, I talked to, uh, Chairman of the Select Board in Buckland, cause they had passed a similar, uh, bylaw a few years back and, um, he said that, uh, many of the restaurants, cause that's where Sherbrooke, Shelburne Falls is, uh, many of the restaurants uh, told them that they were glad that the, uh, bylaw went through because it gave them, uh, sort of, uh, an excuse with their customers to, uh, go forward with, uh, converting over. Um, so even though they wanted to do it, they thought they would get pressure from their, uh, customers, uh, not to do it. So, uh, anyhow, they were glad that the town, uh, uh, implemented that bylaw.
Now Buck, Buckland doesn't have any, basically anything up there.
No, Shelburne Falls.
Shel, Shelburne Falls has a few restaurants in the Bidge of Flowers and that nature here, but.
Have done that on their own, not hidden behind a town ban.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm, I'm talking about.
Philly to me.
Yeah, you know, uh, Caldores in North Hampton, I know there's a plastic ban in North Hampton and I wanna tell you that the plastic bags over at Caldores in North Hampton, I mean, Caldores, listen to me how far back I've gone.
Walmart. I hate those bags. They're so ridiculously.
Walmart, Walmart is so thick.
Well, they're awful.
And they're allowable though, but they're, they're you, reusable.
All right, yeah.
They're reusable. Yeah, the thing is, a lot of the ways that people are reusing them, for instance, where I live, you know, Winfield Estates, we have dumpsters here, dumpsters for the trash and dumpsters for single-stream recycling. And people are putting their, they're recycling like crazy. It's wonderful, but they put it in a plastic bag. Which the re- you know, municipal recycling facility hates that because those plastic bags get all, we're not supposed to do that. We're, they're, they're just. These, but these are recyclable bags. They're the only ones that can be used over in North Hampton, so they are recyclable. You, you mean the thicker plastic bag? Yeah. Yeah, and those are recyclable. Those are usually a number five plastic. It's nice when stores will buy the ones that have a label inside with a little triangle and the number. Um, but those, those are, you can put those in your, you know, when it gets so shot that you don't wanna use it anymore, you could put that in your recycling bin, but the single-use thin ones, you can't. We can throw it in my dumpster, but who knows? You know, I mean, that's what it is. I mean. Yeah, that's what, that's what people do. They throw it in the trash. Yeah, exactly. Think about where the trash is going. It's going to an incinerator and being burnt. But, but you're still, but you're still using some form of plastic. But you're still, but you're still using some form of plastic. So it's not really, I mean, the plastic bags they use over here at Walmart now are nothing. And I think they're compliant to what you're looking at. Have you looked at the Walmart bags over in Hadley?
How much, how much plastic do they use since they're like eight times thicker and they're smaller? So you can't put as much stuff in them?
So are you talking about like reusable bags with a woven handle or the little No, they, they just have a very thin type of plastic bag that they're using that I'm assuming is what's a lot, what's allowable because it's not, it's not of a thicker plastic that they used to have. I mean, you'd have to go and Trying to ban are the same, any single-use plastic is just being lazy, actually, you know, like, once you have your own reusable bags, it's so easy to be in the habit of using them. When they get dirty, you can wash them. It's just like owning a reusable water bottle instead of more and more and more single-use But I do, I do use these bags. I do reuse them all the time. But how? Is trash bags? No, no, I, I transport things like to work or whatever. Yeah, I mean, I do too. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they are reusable. The problem is they're ending up in the trash. Well, that's where you usually throw your trash. Yeah.
Does Walmart in North Hampton, do they charge for those bags?
No. I think she's just talking about their regular single-use gray bags. Well, they have a thicker in North Hampton. Okay. They're allowable in North Hampton. They're reusable and they were thicker plastic bag that you can use, reuse again.
Yeah, yeah, I think the intention was bring those bags back to Walmart and use them the next time you go shopping.
Yeah, which is actually fine if people would eventually, when they're done with them, would stick them in the bin at the Walmart or the grocery store where they actually would get recycled and reused. But most people do not do that. They just, eventually when they're done with it, they throw it in the trash. I don't know. I've got a bag of them in my, in my room here that's low bags from North Hampton in case I need them because I like them because they're heavier. So I understand that. The point is, we all have to start thinking about what we're using, what went into making it, and what is going to happen to it when we're done with it. And you know, and you got to think about what's what Mr. Fiden Kevich said also about paper bags, trees, trees take paper bags to be made. There's a whole cycle of things that, you know, that we look at, that we look at when we're trying to make things better, no matter which way you look at it.
But I think it's wrong to take away someone's right to choose. If somebody says, do you want a bag for that? 90% of the time I say, no, I got two hands and I live a mile away. I don't need a bag. But you can't take away people's right to choose and you can't force a company to do that. I don't believe in that at all. And the paper straw
You're not, you're not thinking about our trash problem.
Well, that's, that's an individual problem and you're taking away someone's right to choose how they take care of themselves. So if you make a ban, like you might be responsible, absolutely. Bruce might be responsible. I'm responsible. Joyce is responsible. But taking away someone's right to decide how they handle their business
What about people that, what about people that go down the street and flick their cigarette butts out the window? I, I don't think people should have the right to trash the planet. I don't think you should have the right to do that. They don't, but they, but that's I know that's, and that's why we want this ban is it's, I mean, most
Then you're taking it away from people that use the bag four, five, six, seven, 10, 20 times.
The kind of Have a different bag that they can still use that number of times.
We're not taking away all the bags. We're just taking away one kind.
We're using, we're taking away the single-use plastic bags that are less than, I think, 0.4 milliliters thick. There's a definition in the bylaws, but those don't get reused.
They don't, yeah, they don't last.
When you use They're the ones, they're the ones you see blowing around stuck in trees. They're the ones that the committee on the 9th of May picked up, what, 130 large bags full of trash around town, just blowing on the side of the road that people
Yeah, they're the ones
Are irresponsible. You may be responsible, but most people, unfortunately, litter.
So the thing is, we're, what we're working with are the people who aren't responsible. So if this, the thing is, once they're not given out at the store anymore, you won't even miss them because right there, there will be a reusable bag that you can purchase for like a dollar, you know, and I don't know. I mean, it's, it's an easy transition to make and people that, that makes them mad. Too bad. I mean, this, they're ending up in our rivers and our oceans. Fish are eating them and dying, you know, they're just, they're mess. I just don't think people should have the right to trash the place.
Go ahead.
This, this was supposed to be a presentation and all this discussion should be a town meeting, not in our meeting here.
Here, here.
Okay. Any questions about specifically what's in the bylaw or the warrant article while Bruce is here? Anything that we need to address before against the town meeting and have this discussion at town meeting?
I do have, I'm sorry, there's a, well, I was gonna say I do have one minor change to make in the section addressing the straws. So I don't know if I should share my screen with that or just
Just send it, just send it.
Just send it over because they'll have to type it in in the right format. So.
Okay.
Tony. Biden, up here.
Okay. Tony, did you have just a quick question? Because
Oh, no, I just thought we should let Ms. Nelson keep talking because I think if she keeps talking, well, this ban will never pass because that's, that's exactly what I was talking about. So go ahead, let her talk. Thank you.
We'll, we'll have this discussion on town meeting and we'll just, we'll close this out for now. Bruce, thanks for, thanks for coming and Jack as well. All right, we'll keep going. And next we have Town Administrator Report. Carolyn, do you want to knock? You're muted.
Okay. I just want to let you know the Senator Comerford's office is holding a municipal leaders town hall meeting that she wanted me to just share with you all. That's on May 11th. It's Zoom. It begins at 5:00 and it's just going to be giving an update of what her team is doing and what lies ahead of the district. Just a reminder about the dates. We have May 5th for town meeting and May 17th for elections. And I, the last thing I wanted to share is just a real nice thing that Jessica Spankable is doing in collaboration with the eighth grade civics class at Hopkins. She's hosting the day here where she's giving them tours and meeting with all the department heads and they get to ask a lot of questions. And we've gotten questions ahead of time that are really, really interesting coming from eighth graders. So I just wanted to thank Jessica for doing that. We need municipal leaders coming from that age group. So that's that.
Sounds good.
Alright, so all we have left is executive session tonight. So if we have any announcements before we go to that?
Yeah, the Hadley Mothers Club is having their recycling day on Saturday from 8 until 1 o'clock at the elementary school. So.
Do they take computers, John?
Yes. There's a whole list, I believe, online on the Hadley Mothers Club website that tells you what, what they're accepting and what they're charging for fees to dispose of this stuff.
Okay.
I'll remind people that Hadley Climate Change Committee is holding their first ever Hadley Climate Day this Saturday from 10 to 4 at the Library and Senior Center.
And Public Forum for Town Meeting is the 28th.
We couldn't, is, is it possible to combine that on Wednesday?
Yeah, sure. That'd be great.
It's your meeting and we're going to go over the warrant?
Yeah. That okay with everybody? Instead of two, two meetings about?
Yeah, that'd be great. Let's just get it done.
Okay.
You know me, get it done.
Yes. I'm scared to talk.
Oh, Carolyn. I don't bite.
Any other announcements?
I do. I neglected at the last meeting. I don't know where I went. I wasn't feeling well at that point. But anyway, I do have some announcements tonight. I'd like to send our condolences to several families tonight, to the family of Barbara Zurich. We send our condolences from the Select Board to Priscilla Edmund, to her family, to Michael DeCola, sending our condolences to his family also. Margaret Christotic, condolences to her family. And Nancy Wysocki, condolences from the Select Board to her family also.
Okay. So next we have Executive Session, Contract Negotiations for the Police Union. The Select Board will enter into Executive Session as per the provisions of MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position, position of any public body and the chair so declares.
David, could you let Peter Lane, who's the representative for the Auto Dealers License, know that it's already been approved?
Okay, thank you. That's all. I just didn't understand if the vote at the consent agenda meant that it was approved. I appreciate watching Hadley deliberate this evening, but thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for joining us.
Alright.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Just need a motion to enter to Executive Session, please.
So moved.
And a second. Alright, motion by Joyce, second by Jane. And as Chair of the Hadley Select Board, I state that the board has moved and seconded to enter into Executive Session. And then I state that discussing the matter in open session will have a detrimental effect or an adverse effect on the town of Hadley. And we will not reconvene in open session. So roll call, please.
Roll call vote, Phil?
Yes.
Yes.
Chungaloo?
Yes.
Wiskewitz?
Yes.
And Parsons? Yes, sorry. Thank you.
Alright, good night, everybody else.
Good night.